Okay.
Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Today's date is Wednesday, November 16th, 2016. Time is 5:04. Can we have a roll call, please?
Planning Commissioners Astorian, Landrigan, Manukian, Shabazian, and Chairperson Lee.
Here. Can we have a report regarding posting of agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, November 9th, 2016, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Thank you. Can we all stand? Commissioner Astorian, can you let us pledge?
We'd be happy to. Please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please recede. Okay, for the approval minutes, I was not here for the last one. So, okay.
Do we have a second?
We have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. Do we have oral communications at CNN? Okay. Item number six, zoning appeals. All business students, there are none. So move on to the item number seven, Planning Commission items. All business, there's none. For the new business, Penitentiary Person Map, CHLN number 1631. This item is continued to December 7th to allow for re-noticing. So then we move on to item number two. Use variance case number PVAR 1604234. Location is 3512 Foothill Boulevard. Applicant is George M. Maria Capodice. And can we have a report regarding this?
Capodice.
Capo, thank you very much. I know I was gonna butcher that name. So, staff, can we have a report, please?
Yes, good evening and thank you. The applicant's proposal is to renew a use variance to allow the continued operation of a recreational vehicle storage parking lot on the R1-zoned portion of a property located at 3512 Foothill Boulevard. The project site is an approximately 24,000 square foot down-slope lot with frontage on Foothill Boulevard. The site is 100 feet wide and approximately 305 feet deep and is located in two zones, the CH Commercial Hillside Zone and the R1 Single Family Zone. The project site is located along Foothill Boulevard, which is recognized as a suburban corridor commercial district in the North Glendale Community Plan. This area is characterized primarily by land uses and development oriented towards automobile access with a variety of commercial uses that provide typical day-to-day shopping needs to the community and feature a large number of vehicle repair facilities. The dual-zone lot has two land-use element designations in accordance with the city's general plan. The commercially-zoned portion of the project site has a community services land-use element designation and the residentially-zoned portion has a low-density residential land-use element designation. The commercially-zoned portion of the lot was originally developed in 1979 with a one-story multi-tenant building with 10 parking spaces with access to the site solely from Foothill Boulevard. Currently, the tenants include an office use and vehicle repair shops. The residentially-zoned portion of the project site is developed with an 18-space parking lot that is used for RV storage. Access to the residentially-zoned portion of the lot is from the rear of the property from Mary Ann Street via an existing easement. The application does not propose any changes to the existing operation or an increase in the number of spaces used for the storage of RVs. As there is no expansion and no changes to the operation, it's not anticipated that there would be any impacts to traffic or circulation over and above the existing conditions. Staff didn't receive any comments from other departments as it related to the applicant's request to renew the use variance. Neighborhood Services cited that there weren't any open code enforcement cases for the site and the police department did not have any recommended conditions and stated that there have not been any issues or calls for service for this location. In terms of project history, a use variance for RV storage was originally granted for this site back in 1975. Since then, there have been two additional use variances granted for the renewal of the RV storage commercial lot in 1981 and again in 2006. There are exceptional circumstances for this dual-zone lot that do not apply generally to other properties in the area and the strict application of the R1 zoning standards would result in unnecessary hardship that's inconsistent with the intent of the code. The southerly portion of the lot is zoned R1 and is isolated with no street frontage. Access is via an existing easement only. This essentially creates a landlocked parcel. The site conditions limit the potential for any type of development on the R1-zoned portion of the lot that would be consistent with zoning standards. The dual-zone lot is separated in the middle by a downhill-sloped berm with the only access between the two via a staircase down to the storage lot. There's no vehicular access to the storage parking lot from the driveway along Foothill Boulevard due to the down-slope berm in the middle and the development on-site. The existing conditions of the site cannot be altered as there is no other land or site available to allow expansion. The easterly neighbor is an animal hospital with a similar situation with dual zoning where the rear portion is zoned residential and is currently used as a parking lot for the business. Due to the limited access, no street frontage, peculiar location, isolation, and existing conditions, the residentially-zoned portion of the lot would not be usable were the provisions of the R1 zone strictly applied. I have not received any comments or emails about the application. The only person that has contacted me is the neighbor regarding the existing easement. Staff does recommend that the Planning Commission approve the project subject to the attached findings and recommended conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation and I thank you.
Thank you. For the record, Commissioner Manukian, I'll step in. I believe you have read the case. So, any questions for the staff?
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
When did, Miss Stotler, perhaps either yourself or Eric can answer this question? This overlay parking that is not allowed in R1 zoning, when did that become part of our code? Vehicular parking that is not allowed?
I don't, you mean, it's never been allowed in the R1 zone?
From the beginning.
Yeah, so they've had it, correct.
From conception of our ordinance, this is the code.
Yes, they just happen to have a use variance that's been in place, I think, since 1975.
1975, 41 years ago, right?
Yes.
The easement, what's the issue with the easement or what's the question?
The owner was under the impression that this application was to approve the easement, but it is an existing easement that's been tied to the two properties since, I believe, 1967 according to the documentation I've read.
The easement was granted by the neighbor, is that what it is?
It's an easement between the two properties, so...
But who is the grantor or who is the servant?
It would be the, going back in time, from what I could tell, I think it was, it would be the neighbor. Sorry, yeah, it would be the neighbor.
So the easement is for the purposes of accessing the neighbor's property?
Into the RV storage lot, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you. One of the things that I noticed is that it was approved with conditions to store recreational vehicles in the R1 zone in '75. What were those conditions is part of my question? Then in '81, it approved use and standard variance to permit the renewal of a recreational vehicle storage yard without providing pavement, walls, or wheel stops. And then the third one was in 2006. The zoning administrator approved the use and standard variance case number with conditions to allow surface parking of recreational vehicles in the residential zone without providing lighting, wheel stops, parking lot landscaping, and minimum five-and-a-half-foot-high decorative wall along the interior property line. So, as I looked at this property, I do see landscaping that is screening there. That's not on the property?
So, the last use variance from 2006, the record indicates that that was the request, but based off the final decision letter for that application, the wheel stops ended up being provided for, the trees were provided for, and the curbs that were part of their last request would also be provided for as well as irrigation and landscaping per the plan. So I think what happened based off the record was that this is what they requested and somewhere in between they decided we will provide these items and then the use became the bigger part of the variance request.
So, my question is, since they did provide this, is the maintenance and the continuance of that part of this?
For the standards, no. The standards would run with the land. The request is for the use. The code had since been amended to reflect that just the standards will run with the land, so they would only have to renew the use in this, with this case. That answer your...
My concern is this. Yes, but they are not obligated to maintain this buffering that they have put in place?
They would be required to maintain it as part of, you know, the conditions of approval. We add a condition...
That that's there.
That it be maintained.
And add that condition.
Okay.
Does that condition serve? What buffering are we referring to?
Well, if you look at the pictures here,
I have.
You can see that they're buffering some of the residential street.
With the screens?
Yes.
Right, okay.
And in lieu of a wall, which is required by code. And there are other screenings that the landscape is providing to that area. And my suggestion and hope is that we would, those would be maintained with the continuation of this.
Whatever is existing remains and maintains.
Exactly, existing and be maintained.
And that's a fair...
It's a part of the condition.
Right.
It's a reasonable request.
Right. Any other comments for the staff? And we have applicant, okay, without butchering your name again, George Capodice. Capodice. Okay, and Maria, so together, you are both applicants, so together you have 15 minutes.
All right, thank you. I prepared something here to read to you. Most of it's been already addressed. As you're aware, my husband and I are here to express our desire to request the allowance of the continued operation of a recreational vehicle storage parking lot on the R1 low-density residential zone portion of our dual-zone lot. This request is to continue to operate the use in the exact same manner as it has been operating successfully without incident over the past several decades. My husband and I purchased the property back in 2005 and at that time, as the new owners of the property, we were granted approval for the use and standard variance. This particular storage facility for recreational vehicles has been in operation as such since an approval was granted to the previous owner in 1975. Since that time, the storage of recreational vehicles has continuously operated without negative impact on the surrounding residential and commercial neighborhood. We do feel that this type of facility in the Lockresina area offers a benefit to the community. It provides residents a viable option for proper as well as secure storage. Vehicles are installs and no repair, maintenance, or washing of any vehicles is allowed. The parking and traffic circulation for the continued storage of recreational vehicles on the rear of our lot will not change. The landscaping, fencing, setbacks, wheel stops, curbs, and irrigation that have been properly maintained will not change. This type of facility assists in keeping large recreational vehicles off the single-family neighborhood streets. In addition, as one of the goals of the city of Glendale is to encourage a beneficial and productive use of property, we wish to request the ability to continue the storage of recreational vehicles as this would certainly achieve this goal as well. We would also like to request that the application be approved to run with the use and that there be no expiration date.
You're going to speak?
No.
He's just gonna help me with answering any questions.
Right. Well, I think one of the things that Commissioner Landrigan mentioned was an additional condition. So do you have any comments on that?
With regard to the maintenance?
It sounded to me when you were reading that you would be fine with adding the condition that the existing landscaping that has been installed will be maintained.
Exactly.
As is, exactly.
And we understand that as a requirement and we certainly would continue to do that.
Thank you.
Any questions?
So you understand that this is a 10-year term? I mean, this is for 10 years?
Well, we were hoping that, sorry.
No, I was, they wanted it to be indefinite at this point.
That's why I brought that up, yes.
So we were hoping that it would be indefinite as far as this use so long as nothing changes at all.
Okay.
Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question from our legal team, actually. Is it possible to actually extend a variance over 10 years? Indefinite as they were requesting?
Members of the commission, typically, use variances do contain expiration dates because that's the only way we can track that the use is continued. Variances that run with the land are granted with respect to characteristics of the property that are sort of immutable, like the, you know, the steepness of the lot, for example, or whether it's a flag lot. But for use variances, we are allowed to put expiration dates on it and it's up to the discretion of the Planning Commission, but the staff does certainly recommend an expiration date.
May I continue in that questioning? So, the expiration date runs with the property, so it protects the city if there is a change of ownership? That we would, any change would have to come back? Is that correct?
I don't believe a change of ownership, but it forces the property owner, whoever it is at the time, to come back at the time and request approval. And at that time, it's a sort of check and balance on whether the use is continued or ceased or changed.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
I have one question. What's the, when, for example, if they come back and they want to renew after 10 years, in 2026, right? There is a cost that is associated with it. In today's terms, what would be the cost of an application like that to go forward? Because while I didn't ask them the question, that could very easily be a motivation why they're asking for it to be indefinite.
If I may, sorry. The cost for renewal for an existing use variance in an R1 was recently changed and it's currently about $2,000 as opposed to a new use variance, which is close to $17,000.
So it's about $18 a month, talking about? Just quick, man, that's all. One more question, Mr. Chair. Eric, what is, have we given use variances that are for longer than 10 years? Is that, is there a precedent for that?
I'm sure we have and I think on this previous one we did because we haven't seen this one come back in a while. I think their previous expiration was, what was it?
It was 10.
It was 10 years, okay. That's pretty standard, especially for a use variance because we don't, I mean, we really don't want to see a lot of use variances in the city anyway. And eventually we'd like to see these things kind of go away at some point, which is the point of the expiration date. If they were to sell it and that new owner doesn't want to really proceed with that, then that use would just kind of go away after that 10 years and wouldn't kind of reapply and stay in perpetuity. So specifically in the single-family zones, which the council a few years back, and I don't see if it says the exact, back in 2009, you can no longer get a use variance in a single-family zone. They're only able to do so because it existed prior to that date. So that's one of the things that, you know, the city is really trying to discourage is use variances, especially in the single-family zones. So that's kind of a big point of why we would like to have the expiration date on the property so that if that use goes away, then it just doesn't stay with the land and then 40 years from now, somebody can continue that use.
Well, it just seems to be that if we can make the findings for 10 years for a use variance, we can make the same findings without any difficulty for, say, 15, 17, or 16 and a half years as well, right?
Yeah, I would say so, yeah.
Is the reason because you want to keep it at 10 years because everything else is 10 years and you just don't want it variations, stuff like that, or?
No, I think it's really just for, kind of what I explained earlier, is that eventually we'd like to have these use variances kind of go away. And so, 10 years is not, it's not a, you know, rock-hard number or anything else. Sometimes, you know, it might be 5, it might be 7, it might be 10, it might be 15. It's like, it varies depending on the use. But in this particular case, because it is a single-family zone, something that council didn't want to see occur anymore is why we're suggesting the 10 years.
So I just want to clarify again. So the renewal fee was $2,000, not $17,000, right?
Correct, yeah. We apply, we had a, in the last fiscal year, we added a new fee to the ordinance that would allow the existing single-family zones to come in at a little bit cheaper price than the use variances in other areas of the city.
Okay. Any more questions? Then we can go into a deliberation.
I'll get started if you don't mind. In my opinion, you know, I look at this thing, although the findings have been made and so forth, I look at this thing as a continuation. It's been around for 41 years. And with deference to what Commissioner Landrigan suggested about maintaining the existing barriers for the look and whatever it is, I'm okay with that. I wouldn't mind to make this 10 years 15. This way, helping them out so they would not have 10 years from now come back another $2,000 for something that it's been going on for 41 years. So in other words, for the past 40 years, you would take a few dollars or percentage points for inflation, this thing has cost whoever the owner of that property has been anywhere between $1,000, $1,200 to $2,000 every 10 years, which comes to about 18 bucks a month. So I wouldn't mind if it's acceptable to my colleagues to make this 15 as opposed to 10.
Quite honestly, Mr. Chair, I have no problem making it permanent because if we add 10 years, we're talking about a 51-year term of usage. That's as permanent as anything gets these days. So, I mean, whether we say it or not, 10 years from now, who knows? But at that point, it will have been 51 years of continuous usage of this manner. So getting rid of this additional cost on the business owner, I don't have any problems with it.
I disagree. I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
There's a reason why we have variances in the city. So a lot is, has some kind of a issue or constraint on the owner of the lot. But the owner before purchasing the lot is aware of this condition. And when they purchase, they're aware that, you know, they would either have to extend or just not apply for the variance. I think it's important for the city staff to be able to continue having kind of control on the next owner or what would eventually happen to this lot. And as the city staff is suggesting, I think we should, I would recommend we follow, actually, the staff's suggestion. And, you know, you never know, maybe in 10 years we will have new owners that might actually want to do a different type of business on the land. The permanent variance would just allow them to continue doing what they are, but they might actually have a different plan for that lot, so...
May I respond?
After Commissioner Landrigan, please.
I will let you respond and then I will.
Thank you. The whole point of, I understand what you mean, what you're saying, but the thing about a variance is that by definition, it's not permanent. If the property is sold, it will be sold subject to, at this point, 20 conditions and so on. The new owner will operate, continue operation of the property in the same manner. They can't diverge from these conditions and if they do want it, they would be on the hook for $17,000, right? Because they have to come back and apply for...
$2,000. No, $2,000.
$2,000.
The application, the process takes $2,000.
$2,000, not $17,000.
The owner, the new owner...
Still could renew it for $2,000.
Today's cost is $2,000.
For the renewal. For renewal of the...
For renewal. So a new owner is subject to a renewal.
About 10 years.
As opposed to get, if the variance, if they want to change the variance as it's written here, they will have to apply for a new variance.
Or they can remove the variance.
This is what it is. If you want to change it, it's going to cost you $17,000.
No.
No. $2,000.
If I can clarify, the new fee that we created was to address only those use variances that are currently exist in the single-family zones. So if they wanted to apply for a quote-unquote "new use variance", I'm not sure that we could even approve that beyond what this current variance is. So if something can differ, we wouldn't even be able to approve it under today's code.
So the only people who are going to be able to use this the way it is are the current owners.
Or the owners that accept when, if, and when they buy.
Subject to exactly this. Okay, if you're happy with this, what's the problem? That's what I don't understand. Now do what you want.
Commissioner Landrigan?
To follow on that, the dilemma with an indefinite element is that there are conditions right now that if this was brought before us and the use was allowed in an R1, the stormwater management issue on this whole site would be very expensive. As it is right now, it has no stormwater mitigation measures at all. And there are other elements that we need to look at as the city changes and the city's needs change. I believe that 10 or 15 years is a reasonable amount. I think indefinite is antithesis to what a use variance is. It's not just a variance, it's a use variance in a residential area. And as residential areas become more and more lucrative to develop, it's going to cost them not $17,000. They would just remove the use variance and then they would develop it as an R1, which would be whatever that cost is. But in essence, I think that since it is, unless they want to change the land use and the zoning, which is another option, which is extremely costly, I believe since it is an overlay, a use variance, that there should be a time limit on it.
So I think everybody agrees here, the commissioners are going to approve this, but I think now we're talking about whether we go with what the staff is suggesting as a 10 or can we extend it to 15, so...
Or permanent. There are three options.
We have a motion and we forgot to second it before we discussed.
I don't think we have a motion here yet. Was that a motion?
No.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So it was a discussion.
I can make a motion just to find out if there is, if you look warm to it or not.
Okay. What the condition Commissioner Landrigan has suggested?
Well, I am about to read and ask for an approval of the motion that is prepared by the staff with two differences. Number one, the reiteration of what Commissioner Landrigan suggested, the maintenance of the landscaping and the fencing. And number two, as opposed to have a 10-year term, to have this as a 15-year term. So that's what I'm reading this motion for.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a support for that?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a support. Any other, so we have a motion and support, so we could have a roll call.
Call. Planning Commissioners Astorian.
Yes.
Landrigan.
Aye.
Manukian.
Aye.
Shabazian.
Aye.
And Chairperson Lee.
Aye. But the roll call is 5 to 0. Motion passes with the two modifications with the 15-year-old use variance and...
So 10 will become 15.
10 will become 15 and then also the maintenance clause in there.
I just want to verify that, okay, for the maintenance, it's that the existing landscape irrigation, wheel stops, and fencing shall be maintained for the life of this use variance?
Correct. That's what your intention was.
Indeed.
Yes. Motion passes.
So, you came in for 10, you ended up with 15.
Next item is community development amendment updates.
We do have, you had an appeal of a decision that you made. You had approved, actually, you had denied a wireless facility at Dunsmore Park. And that is now being scheduled, the appeal is being scheduled at City Council. I will check in the date.
December 13.
Yes, December 13.
December 13.
At 6:00 p.m.
At 6:00 p.m., so if anybody's interested in attending.
So, I remember Commissioner Manukian was, painted a very vivid picture of the kids playing around that area and so forth. It's very clear to me, right?
Yes, this was the park.
Yes, the same.
So, let me ask, Mr. Chair, the question. Is this in a subtle way asking our chair to appear at the council meeting?
If you would, we would love to have you there if you would like to attend, but it's more of a heads-up to everybody, because I know you were all interested in that. There was a lot of testimony from the public, so I just wanted to announce it to make sure that everybody is aware that it's going to be there. But if three or more of you are attending, please let us know, so we can make sure we don't have a...
See, I know I wouldn't, because I am concerned about admonishment. But having said that, we're cool with it, yeah.
So...
If Mr. Chairperson Lee is not able to go, as vice chair, I would, I think I could go.
So, for my...
I may not, I may not.
Calendar's personal, my calendar. So, if I do run into problems, I'll give you SOS.
Okay.
Comments from commissioners? Okay. So, I welcome the German here. So, move, okay? Thank you.